Good evening and welcome to the June 18th, 2013 San Bruno Planning Commission Meeting. Roll call please.
Chair Biassotti.
Here.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Samut.
Here.
Commissioner Mishra.
Here.
Okay, since Commissioner Chase has done us the kindness of being here on time this evening, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pleasure, Chair. Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, next item, approval of minutes for May 12, 2013.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, all abstained since I wasn't here.
Okay. Thank you. Minutes are approved. Communications.
There are no additional communications from staff this evening.
Okay. And for the folks in the agenda for the evening can be found on San Bruno's website, it's sanbrunoca.gov. Public comment, is there anyone who would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to conflicts of interest. Anyone have a conflict this evening? No, okay. Then we'll move on to public hearings. First one, item A, 101 Balboa. It's a request for a use permit to allow an addition which increases the floor area of an existing home by greater than 50 percent. And staff report, please.
Thank you, good evening. The application, as mentioned, is for a use permit for an expansion of greater than 50 percent at 101 Balboa Way. The project does meet all other development standards of the R1 zoning district. The site is located on a cul-de-sac at the southern city limits. It has an irregular shape. Everything sound okay for everybody out there? Okay, great. The site has an irregular shape and a lot size area of 5,587 square feet. The applicant is proposing a two-story addition to the existing one-story home. Specifically, the first floor addition would be to the right side of the existing home and towards the rear. You can see on your plans that the site on the cul-de-sac has angled property lines and the applicant has designed the garage to follow that angled property line for a section of the garage to maximize the storage area there in the garage. The second floor would be located on top of the first floor addition, so to the far right rear corner of the house. As proposed, the first floor would have 1,403 square feet of living area. The second floor would have 418 square feet of living area. And they also propose quite a large one-car garage. So the total square footage would be 2,220 square feet, which is a .41 FAR. So as you know, that is well below the threshold of .55 FAR. Staff is supportive of the design of the house and find that it is consistent with the residential design guidelines. Specifically, the second floor is set back to the rear and is integrated into the roof lines below. This helps to reduce the mass of the house. Additionally, the exterior materials are carried throughout the home, so the existing materials that are on the house today, the siding and the window trim and the sills, are proposed to remain and be added to the addition as well. Staff has also worked with the applicant to add some architectural details to the house. Right now, it has a relatively simple architectural style and they would like to add a few things to add some kind of visual appeal. So we've worked with them in a manner to be consistent with the house and add some additional architectural interest. The project was reviewed at the May 16th Architectural Review Committee meeting. At that time, the committee forwarded the project with a positive recommendation and very minor comments. Those comments have been implemented. They included a landscaping plan showing the laundry and also including the summary of green building measures. So those items are in the plans that you have before you tonight. Staff sent a courtesy notice to immediate neighbors on May 7th and the required legal notice was sent on June 7th. We did receive one email requesting the full set of plans be sent via PDF, which we did send. The neighbor did not express any specific concerns to staff as follow-up to that email. So staff would recommend approval of the project based on findings of fact 1 through 7 and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 24. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here? Would you like to speak on your project? You could step to the podium and give us your name and tell us a little about your project if you'd like.
Great, so I purchased the house in June of 2003. I've had it now for about 10 years. As times evolved, my family's evolved and probably going to get bigger at some point. So the option was to look into adding on to the existing home and that's what I'm going to do.
Very good.
I think I've worked with all my neighbors in the cul-de-sac to talk about the design which they are for. And at this point, if you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Just for the record, would you state your name, please?
Steve Sanchez.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner.
Just one question.
Please.
And that was, it's still a one-car garage, it's a large one-car garage.
Correct.
Was there any discussion or thought about expanding to a two-car garage?
There was. And basically, I just needed a bunch of storage, you know, with strollers and car seats and, you know, with the laundry room being in there, I definitely want a table to fold clothes and whatnot. So just looking for a bigger garage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Okay, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this issue? Anyone? Okay, so we'll close public comment. Back to the commission for comment or vote. Motion or vote.
If there's no discussion, I'd recommend the planning commission approve the use permit 13-007 based on findings of fact 1 through 7 and conditions of approval 1 through 24.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There's a 10-day appeal period. Good luck. Okay, item B, 1999 Earl Avenue in San Bruno. This is a request for revision to a previously approved temporary use permit to allow the expansion of an off-site construction staging area within the Crestmore neighborhood per Section 1284-030 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff, please.
Commissioner Biassotti and planning commissioners, this application actually originally came to you in April of this year, April 16th, at your planning commission meeting. And at that time, you looked at two proposed sites for staging for construction in the Crestmore rebuild area. Presently, what's going on is that the city of San Bruno, along with contractors it's hired, is in the process of rebuilding infrastructure within this neighborhood that sustained the explosion and fire in 2010. As part of this work, it's necessary to have staging areas for construction materials and construction vehicles. At your April 16th meeting, you actually approved two such staging areas. In the meantime, our staff has been working with a contractor, JMB Construction, who's now been hired, and they've determined that they need a larger area for staging for their construction activities. These activities involve replacing and repairing underground infrastructure such as the storm drain lines, water lines, sewer lines within this neighborhood, and then also rebuilding and repairing sidewalks, streets, and streetlights. One of the sites you looked at and approved was a Caltrans site. And the Caltrans site was at the corner of San Bruno Avenue West and Glenview Drive. At that time, you approved an area that was about 11,000 square feet. And given the need for more staging area, the request tonight is to expand that area for staging of materials and construction vehicles to about 40,000 square feet. This Caltrans property is about seven acres in size. And as staff has looked at this, staff is recommending that there be a 30-foot setback for the staging of materials on this property, 30 feet from the sidewalk on Glenview Drive and also 30 feet from nearby residential properties. Staff is also recommending that there be a chain link fence with slats and that the slats be anti-graffiti in terms of their coating. We're sensing that with the setback, with the eight-foot-high chain link fence and this location, that the concerns of the neighborhood would be addressed. In addition, we've added a particular special condition that I'd like to refer to in the conditions of approval. We're indicating that to address any loose materials that could be blown off-site, that a condition be added to the original conditions of approval that you looked at in April, and this condition is condition eight. And it states that loose material storage shall be covered with a tarp at all times and located at the southern end of the new storage yard area. Contractors shall use all best practices consistent with BAA, QMD, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District to minimize dust impacts, et cetera. So we're suggesting that that condition be added. I would also like to point out that there's a condition seven. The condition seven indicates that in the event that there may be dust that's blown to nearby residential properties, the contractor would be responsible for cleaning those homes, washing windows, et cetera. The condition reads, "The applicant shall remove all equipment and materials and thoroughly clean the staging area and any immediate properties affected by dust or debris within 14 days of the contract notice of substantial completion." And then finally, I'd like to add a condition that is not listed in the staff report. We indicate in the staff report that there should be a 30-foot setback to residential properties and then also to the rear of the sidewalk on Glenview. And so the additional condition would read as follows. "The applicant shall maintain a minimum of a 30-foot setback from the residential properties along Estates Drive and a minimum of a 30-foot setback from the sidewalk along Glenview Drive on the Caltrans storage and staging area." So with that, our recommendation tonight is to go forward and for the planning commission to approve this revision to the TUP, the temporary use permit that you approved in April, subject to the findings of fact in the staff report 1 through 3 and the conditions of approval 1 through 10, plus the additional condition I just read into the record. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, through the chair. There's a couple of questions. On the Caltrans lot, that upper section is rented to the Church of the Highlands right now. Are they still going to be using it? Because you have the whole thing yellowed out there, is that excluded from this section?
Right. The area that would be used is the area closest to the intersection of Glenview and San Bruno West. So it's the 40,000 square feet, approximately one acre, that's closest to that intersection. It's not up toward the hill area.
So that's closest to the Glenview area?
Yes.
Or closer to the same, what intersection are you talking about?
Pardon me?
You said closest to the intersection, what intersection?
Yes, closest to the intersection of Glenview Drive and San Bruno West.
Okay, so that's the area that the Church of the Highlands is using now and the people use for the park for the walking trail.
I'm sure that the city is going to accommodate the walking trail and coordinate with the Church of the Highlands, so.
Well, I just want to make sure that, because it does get used a lot for the walking, for the park, for the Church of the Highlands.
Okay.
And so, I mean, I don't want to, are we taking that away from them?
That's not the intent. I'm sure that's not the intent.
I know, but not the intent, but I mean, is it?
Well, you know.
And another question I have before you maybe answer them all, is there, there's no fencing on the, by the firehouse, correct? And that's, and where are we having any buffers over from the residential down by the firehouse?
You know, the focus of this extension is really the Caltrans property. This TUP revision is the Caltrans property. So you had already looked at the fire station property last time in April.
Correct, but now if we're going to give them an extra, you know, 40,000 square feet or whatever it is, I mean, do they even need the Glenview area by the firehouse? That's, I mean, that's right next, I mean, I brought the question up last time, I mean, that's kind of intrusive on the, you know, there's a house right next door to that.
Right.
Do they even need that anymore?
It's an excellent question, and the information we've received is that they need more area. So they've indicated that they need the fire station site as well as this site and the expanded area associated with this site.
Because the fencing is going to be on both sides or just on the Glenview side?
I'm focusing only on this site now, the Caltrans site right now. I'd have to refer back to the staff report for the April meeting to look at the conditions at that time.
Okay. Well, I know the last meeting had no fencing, so I know that for sure.
So if that's the way it was approved last time, there's no proposed change. Tonight, though, on the Caltrans site, we are proposing an eight-foot-high fence, chain link fence with slats.
I'm just a little confused. Why would we be restrictive on one parcel and not the other parcel? It's like, we're telling some neighbors we don't care if it's ugly and some of the other neighbors by, you know, Glenview that we want to protect you.
You know.
I think we, I would like to, I would like to put in here that if we're going to grant them this extra square footage that they fence both sides of.
Then why?
If we're going to grant them this extra storage space, that we make them put a fence on the fire, fire department site also. If we're going to, you know, this would be, I don't want to tell some neighbors it's okay to make a mess in front of your house and other neighbors say, no, we're going to, you know, hide you, protect you.
It is a TUP, it's a temporary use permit revision. So that does open up the TUP, the temporary use permit. So if it's your desire to ask for fencing on the other site, you can certainly do that. And we would work with the contractor to assure that that happens. So the TUP, the temporary use permit, is open with this request. So if that's your desire and direction, we would go forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair.
Please, go ahead.
Can, this question for staff. Since it is a TUP, a temporary permit, do you know the length of time that they've requested that temporary permit to be?
Yes. The length of time is one year. So it's one year through, it'll go through 2014, so it's one year, so for a one-year period.
Commencing?
Commencing from actually the original date, which was April. So it's one year from April.
So less than a year currently.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Please.
The condition of approval number 10. The applicant shall comply with all best practice, best management practices for stormwater prevention, stormwater pollution prevention. Was the intent here to reference the NPDES standard or what standard are we referencing?
Those are the standards that we work with, yes.
So should we add that in here?
We could.
So that it's clear?
We could do that.
And a second question that I have is, I support the idea of adding a fence on the, onto the other property as well. Is there some sort of a lighting requirement if you fence it off?
There is not a lighting requirement on this.
Did the fire or police department want one?
We weren't told that they wanted a lighting requirement for this. So it will be secured, it will be fenced.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, through the chair. With this proposed additional large parcel here for their storage, does that not kind of perhaps maybe lend itself to, and I understand the fencing thing, but then, you know, theft or vandalism, I mean, it's considerably larger than obviously the fire station area.
Correct.
And it's obviously less occupied, if you will. So how is the security actually going to be, you know, monitored? I mean, are they going to have somebody there? Are they going to have material on site that's worth, you know, worth somebody going in there and stealing or, you know what I'm saying? Does it make sense?
Well, the site will be fenced and in that way secured. They're not intending, as far as I know, to have 24-hour security. The property, you know, as so many properties in this community, if there is an issue, there could be a police call to come to the site if there's any indication of vandalism or perhaps breaking into the property. At this time, there's not the intent to have 24-hour security at the property. If, I would presume, if there becomes an issue, then they would reevaluate that and consider bringing security to the site. At this time, there's not an intent to have added 24-hour security, though.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question, if I could. Is there going to be a job site trailer on that particular?
It's a staging area. I'm not anticipating that there would be a job site trailer. It's, the intent is that during the work week, 8 to 5, there'd be construction activities on the streets. And then after hours, the vehicles and materials that would be used for the construction in this area would be stored on this property and also at the fire station property. So it's more of a staging area for the construction that's to occur and then an area to store vehicles and other equipment that's being used for that construction after hours.
Okey-dokey, I'm sure we'll probably be revisiting the security thing at some point in time. I got a feeling about that one.
Anyone else?
Through the chair.
Please.
Just as a point of, just to comment, our commission information, I live in that area and I go by it many, many times throughout the day. And there is, that area's been used for a variety of different storage units and lots of different projects. And it's, certainly I've not checked into police records, but I have certainly, it's, going up and down, it would be of interest to me to know if there was any issues going on. But I've never, in my 36 years of living there, have observed any vandalism or major issues. I think part of it is, it's not conducive for a hangaround area due to the weather and the conditions that are up there. But it has not been. It doesn't mean that it wouldn't be in the future. But just as, if it eases any, answers any questions, I have never, to this day, been informed of any issues, nor have I observed any.
Thank you. Okay, is there?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
On condition number five, it says that trash, dirt, and debris should be cleaned and removed on a daily basis and cannot be stored on-site. Is it correct to assume that you don't mean to include debris boxes in that statement?
I think it is correct to assume that.
Could you add that sentence then?
We could.
I think it's, if enforcement is an issue, which I'm seeing is an issue at a lot of sites, you want to be fair to the contractor as well as the city. And if you don't have a debris box, you're in big trouble. Thank you.
We can certainly add that. The condition states not to be stored on-site, but we can certainly add that clarification. Understood.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, let's move on to public comment. Is there someone from the public who'd like to speak on this issue? Please step to the podium and give us your name and.
I'm a owner and resident at 181 Estates Drive. I support the off-site storage, but the only thing I request is that the 30-foot setback be pushed further back into the back of the Caltrans lot. We have, already have an eyesore from the upper lot with the cyclone fence. As you turn off of San Bruno Avenue onto Glenview, there's already an eyesore there. We don't want another, or I don't, I would not prefer another bigger eyesore, just 30 feet right off the sidewalk. As visitors, as owners, proud owners in this case, drive down Glenview and see this temporary fencing and construction lay-down site. I think the neighborhood, the neighborhood has gone through enough. And again, the eyesore, more of a quality of life is what I see every time I turn, turn off of San Bruno Avenue onto Glenview and just see that temporary construction still there, the fence. And that's on the smaller upper lot. And here, we're talking about the larger lower lot. So that's all that I ask. Construction companies do need to do their job and get the neighborhood back in the shape, but as a courtesy to the neighborhood, if it can just be pushed off into the back and create less of an eyesore. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please go ahead.
My name is Anwar Hanhan. I live on 111 Estates Drive. So I believe the 30 feet to be left is not enough room. I, 30 feet is right, you know, my kids, when they go play outside, I mean, we're going to have all the noise and we're going to have all that mess. I wanted to see if it's possible to have more than 30 feet like Leo suggests or, and are we going to have any flammable products in there on the site to be used, I mean, in the storage area?
Staff, want to take a shot at that one?
Could he please repeat the question?
I'm just asking if there's going to be any flammable products or any items that would be, would put our kids in danger?
There would be the storage of vehicles. Other than the storage of vehicles and other similar equipment, I wouldn't imagine that there would be flammables, you know, gasoline or anything like that stored on the site, but there would be vehicles stored on the property.
Does that answer your question, sir?
I mean, is, if there's anything, I mean, are the neighbors going to be safe? Are we going to be safe? I mean, we're talking about safety over here.
Through the chair. The intent, again, is to store vehicles, equipment, and some materials for construction, reconstructing the utilities in this area, storm drains, water lines, et cetera. So there'll be pipe and materials like that stored here. Our objective would be to make this site safe. The site really would be quiet evenings and weekends. It would be used typically 8 to 5 during our standard construction hours, Monday through Friday. So evenings and weekends, the site would be generally quiet. Only by special permit from the Public Utilities or Public Services Department could the site be used on weekends. So we anticipate it to be safe and quiet evenings and weekends.
Any other questions, sir? Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on this issue? Please step to the podium and give us your name, please.
Sorry I'm late, I couldn't get here any earlier. My name is Tom Mann. I live on Rowan Wood Drive. I use, my wife and I use the San Andreas Trail, the county exercise trail, twice a day. We walk it in the morning when there's a lot of senior citizens, retired people up there. And then I go back and run it in the afternoon. And I just saw the rather negative news sign that was stuck in the parking area saying private property, cars will be towed, blah, blah. private property, cars will be towed, blah, blah, blah. That parking lot gets a lot of use. And I heard, I'm not sure what his name is, say that he was sure that the city would, would accommodate the people in the parking. I'd like to know what accommodations are going to happen first and then close it off to the public. That's a public area. It's, I believe it's state land. And the people that, people that use it want to have guaranteed parking. And I want to know where we're supposed to park. Lunardi's parking lot? You can't park out on San Bruno Avenue. It's just not safe. So we have a good safe, off-the-road parking area now. Until you can prove otherwise, leave the parking area accessible to people. Does anyone know where the accommodation for the parkers is going to be?
We'll have staff answer that in just a second.
Okay. I reserve the right to come back and ask more questions if the staff doesn't answer it. Thank you.
Staff, care to?
We'd be happy to respond to that. The, the actual parking area for the trail is, is a separate area. And I think our, our associate planner Laura Russell can describe that in more detail.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
So the property is, is owned by Caltrans and is, has a long-term lease with Church of the Highlands. And our understanding is there's a long-term agreement that Church of the Highlands has to provide, just kind of with the community, to provide that parking as a public benefit. And I think everybody agrees that it, it has been a public benefit. There is not a proposal tonight under this revision to use that area closest to San Bruno Avenue that's customarily used as parking, to use that for staging. And so it's a little bit confusing. So let me try to explain. And there's an exhibit on page seven, exhibit A, that I think is a little bit, is useful to look at. And hopefully, everybody in the audience has a staff report. So the entire area is hatched, and that's the whole Caltrans property. But typically, we talk about it in two different sections. Kind of the, the lower section, which is immediately adjacent to San Bruno Avenue, and that's where the parking is. And then if you kind of think yourself standing at San Bruno Avenue and then starting to move north, then there's a construction staging area that has signs and fencing that has been used for a long time as part of the reconstruction effort. So if everybody can visualize that, that's the existing construction staging lot that's been there. Moving a little bit further north from that, towards, towards the Crestmore neighborhood, towards the Estates Drive, that's the area that is proposed under this revision to be used for construction staging. So it's not the absolute southernmost section up against San Bruno Avenue, but it's the southernmost section of what people refer to as the upper lot. So it's a little bit confusing in terms of semantics, but it's the area between the existing construction staging and the neighborhood that is under consideration tonight.
Through the chair. I think, and I think we're still in public comment, but would it be, we could add a condition that the existing parking for Church of the Highlands and trailhead would, would remain? I mean, we've probably talked about this under, I mean, I'm just kind of trying to answer maybe the, the public's comment. I'll bring that up during, when it comes back to planning commission. But think, think about the wording for that in the meantime, maybe.
We could certainly do that. And I think it would give the, the gentleman who spoke more assurance that the, the access and parking for the trail users would be provided and preserved.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? This is the one chance through this process where you do have an opportunity. So if anyone else would like to speak, this is the time to do it.
Move we close the public hearing?
Pardon me?
I move we close the public hearing.
Okay, well, I'm just giving everyone a chance before we do. Thank you.
I see no one.
Step to the, please.
Hi, my name's Leslie. I was, I guess five minutes too late for Balboa. And all I had a question on, I live in Millbrae, right behind it. I could not determine how high it was going to be. It was very confusing.
Okay. That's an issue that we can address with staff after the meeting, but that item's already been closed.
Okay.
So we can't really discuss that right now.
I understand.
But if you'd like to speak with staff after the meeting, you're more than welcome to.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay. We'll close public hearing. We'll move the conversation back to the commission. Any comments?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Question for staff. That 30-foot buffer, will that be, it doesn't, I haven't heard the official words if you're going to make more, but will that buffer, the 30-foot buffer, be an area that's forbidden for the contractor to use for access, for vehicular traffic, or foot traffic?
Yes, that, that 30-foot buffer area would be outside of the enclosed area for storage. So we would not anticipate there being foot traffic or that area used for storage or vehicles at all.
The reason I ask, and I think you should say explicitly, that contractor access for any purpose is forbidden, other than perhaps firefighting, is because it's not unusual. They get a big load, they want to put it in a specific area, and the only place close enough is from over the fence. And it's very easy to unload material over a fence.
That's a good point, and we could use the clarification language you suggested. The intent is to, to come onto the site by way of the access point and then store the materials within the enclosed area. So the 30-foot buffer on the plan is clearly outside of the storage area. But we can add that language.
I'm only bringing this up because I've been there.
Okay. I have a comment on that 30-foot buffer as well. I'd like to add a condition that the contractor be held responsible for keeping it clear and maintained of weeds, flammable materials, and debris. So that if there is some sort of issue with safety or fire on the site, that the fire could be more easily contained on that property without it spreading, as you would with any like forested area or where there's an area where there's fire danger to homes, you clear 30 feet worth of vegetation and landscaping. So if we can hold the landscape, or the contractor responsible for that, please. Anyone else?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
30 feet is about from me to the other side of that podium. Two people from the public mentioned they thought that was insufficient buffer area. And I'd like to ask staff if it would be a problem if it were changed to 45 feet. Would that create a, an untenable situation or would it be possible to work with that?
The, the 45 feet should work. It, it's going to reduce the area to some extent. But, but perhaps what can happen is that the storage area can expand further away from
Right.
the homes, the nearby homes, and also Glenview. So it could probably shift somewhat on the site and perhaps maintain about, about the same amount of overall area, which is about 40,000 square feet, but provide the setback that you're suggesting.
Okay. I would, I would just propose to the commission that they consider that modification. And with that, I would move to.
Actually, I have, through the chair, I have one more.
Okay.
Page eight of the report, staffing report, shows shrubs within the 45-foot setback that we're asking for. Was your intent to remove that vegetation? Or was your intent to leave that there?
Weeds.
Page eight.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Just the weeds.
Yeah, I'm mostly worried about dry grass and weeds. You know, we're, we're looking at short-term. You know, I'd hate to take away something that in the end is going to be.
I, I just wanted to remove ambiguity because you said.
Yeah, no, thank you for the clarification. Yeah.
So that can remain?
Yeah, I think so.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I move the commission approve revision to the temporary use permit 13-2 based on findings of fact 1 through 3, conditions of approval 1 through 10, and the added conditions 11 about the 45-foot setback, and 12 about maintaining the existing trailhead parking as remaining.
Commissioner Peterson, can we add that one more for the removal of fire, combustible materials in the easement?
Sure. Make that 13 removable of combustible materials from the easement, right?
The setback, you're right.
Sorry, the setback buffer.
Okay.
And the fencing of the second site?
And would you also include the fencing for the site at the firehouse with that?
Yeah, make that 14. Add eight-foot fencing to the firehouse.
And 15, and maintain the parking for the trailhead?
What was that?
Maintaining the parking for the trailhead?
That was added.
That was 12.
That was already there.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That was 12.
So would you reread that one more time, just for clarity, Commissioner Peterson?
11 is the setback. 12 is maintain the existing parking for the trailhead. 13 is remove combustible materials from the setback area. And 14 is add eight-foot fence to the firehouse, similar to the eight-foot fence for this application.
Okay. There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Through the chair, if I could.
Yes, please.
Pardon me. I think there was one more clarification made by Commissioner Mishra regarding condition 10 and the clarification on NPDES. So we can add that as well.
Okay, I add that to my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll second that, but on the question of the combustible material or, I want to make sure they don't have to tear out all the shrubs and all that. Is that considered combustible material? I mean, I think, Chair, we're, we're talking about just the weeds and the dry grass and trash and stuff like that.
That's, that's our understanding. I mean, the idea is not, you know, to be clear, hopefully, this is your recommendation. We're not talking about removing, you know, live vegetation necessarily, but we're talking about weeds, debris, and making sure that the 45-foot setback buffer is fire-safe. We're not talking about removing trees or other live plant material.
Correct. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. And is there an appeal period? Yes, okay. There's a 10-day appeal period. Okay, so the motion's passed and approved. City staff discussion.
There are no staff discussion items this evening.
Okay. That leaves us with selection of July 11th Architectural Review Committee. I'm in.
And for the committee, we would be looking to you to select three members.
I'm in. Joe?
I guess I'm in.
Bobby. Okay. Landing commission discussion.
Yeah, through the chair. Can you give us an update of what's going on in Mills Park Shopping Center? Is it still the Mills Park Shopping Center where the old lines, is that a parking lot going? I've got a couple of calls, people. Looks like they're framing up.
Sure, we'd be, we'd be happy to. As you recall, the Malaka Restaurant was removed at that location. And one of the conditions for removal was that they remove all materials from the site and then provide some perimeter landscape treatments to soften the site. We're expecting that the property may be left in a more vacant state for some period of time. There is a for-lease sign on the property, so GW Williams Company is trying to lease the property. But in the meantime, we wanted to make sure that the property would, would look, would look nice, aesthetically pleasing. We were concerned about there being just a fence put around the property and left that way for some extended period of time. So the understanding is there would not be that chain-link fence around the property. Instead, they would clear the site and put in perimeter landscaping. So right now, they've taken out some concrete, they're creating a planter area along the perimeter sides, San Bruno West and also Camino Plaza. And so the next step will be to actually plant, install the plant materials and irrigation system in that area. And we're expecting that to be completed in July. And then subsequently, they'll try to lease the property in some manner. But in the meantime, there would be the benefit of having the landscape treatment.
It's a heavy-duty planter box.
Yeah, yeah.
Looks like it's a foundation for a 20-foot building.
Okay. Anyone else?
Laura, would you like to report on the architectural conditions you found in Italy while you were trying to?
I found the architectural conditions to be amazing and overwhelming and thoroughly enjoyable.
Great.
So I enjoyed being away and I'm certainly happy to be home again.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you, Rachel.
All right. Well, with that, we conclude our meeting. And the next meeting will be July 16th at 7:00 PM here.